Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This planning commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flankis.
Here.
Vice Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goines. Excuse me. Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Sladman.
Present.
Commissioner Boner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to help. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting, and thank you in advance. Going on to item number four, "Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda?" Good evening, ma'am. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Vicki Higgins, 205 Norland Street, Las Vegas. I want to say thank you for being here this evening, and I am a medical cannabis advocate. I'm here to address item 37. The standalone building was defined as a share.
Before you get into that, we will be calling item 37 in due course, and so if you don't mind, we can probably have it there unless you can't stay here for the evening.
That works. Thank you.
This portion of the agenda is confusing. A lot of folks that aren't used to the process come up and start speaking on that, and I, you know, so if you can wait, that's probably better.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody wish to be heard on any of these items before we move on? Seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to item number five. This is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the special planning commission meetings of September 23rd, 2014, and September 30, 2014, and the regular planning commission meeting of October 14th, 2014. Okay, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. Chair, the motion is to approve the special planning commission meeting minutes of September 23rd, 2014, September 30, 2014, and the regular planning commission meeting of October 14th, 2014.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the meetings for the planning commission, special commission meetings of September 23rd, 2014, and September 30, 2014, and the regular planning commission meeting of October 14th carries. Now we'll move on to item number six. These are our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following item has been requested to be held in abeyance to the January 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. That would be item number 36, VAC 56644. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to, any other housekeeping matters? Okay, does anybody wish to speak on this item, number 36, which is VAC 56644? Seeing none, I will close public comment portion. Any of the commissioners like to be heard on item 36? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the housekeeping matters.
Move to obey item 36 to the January 13, 2015 Planning Commission.
Thank you. Commissioner, please vote. Motion to obey item 36 to the Planning Commission meeting of January 13, 2015 carries. We'll now move on to the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings, all public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Does anybody wish to have any items removed from the one motion, one vote portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and start, beginning with item number seven, which is TMP 55901. The applicant is Barnett Lieberman. The owner is Leah Property LLC. For possible action on request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial merger and re-subdivision at the northeast corner of Coolidge Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number eight is TMP 56671. The applicant owner is Howard Hughes Company LLC. For possible action on request for a tentative map for an 88-lot, single-family residential subdivision at the southwest corner of Far Hills Avenue and Fox Hill Drive in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number nine is RQR 54732. The applicant is Bell's Market. The owner is Shoshani Sabah. For possible action on request for a required review of an approved special use permit for a retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale use within an existing 2,980 square-foot general retail store at 720 West Owens Avenue in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 10 is SUP 56265. The applicant is La Palma Market. The owner is Rainbow Vista LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler off-sale establishment use within an existing 2,400 square-foot general retail store other than listed at 6,700 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite F, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 11 is SUP 56453. The applicant is Jerome Harry. The owner is DK Jewel LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,052-square-foot tavern limited establishment use with a 115-square-foot outdoor patio at 353 East Bonneville Avenue, Suite 111, in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 12 is SUP 56643. The applicant is Women, Infants, and Children, WIC. The owner is Diamond Creek Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for an existing 3,405-square-foot social service provider at 3650 North Rancho Drive, Suite 101, in Ward 5, Councilman Bartle. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SDR 56645. The applicant owner is JDE Holding Company LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 4,093 square-foot addition to an existing 9,115 square-foot animal hospital, clinic, or shelter with no outside pens at 1050 South Rampart Boulevard, Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14, VAC 56154. The applicant is Nicole Investments Limited. Owner is DRS Estate LLC. For possible action on request for petition to vacate public sewer and drainage easements generally located on the south side of Smoke Ranch Road approximately 665 feet east of Expressions Drive in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Final item on the one motion, one vote is item 15, VAC 56656. The applicant is 95 Management LLC. The owner is KAG Development South LLC. For possible action on a request for petition to vacate a four-foot-wide pedestrian access easement generally located approximately 1,461 feet east of the intersection of Wallop Highway and Eagle Canyon Avenue in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I will close public comment portion, open it up for possible discussion amongst the commissioners. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one motion, one vote portion of the calendar.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 7 through 15 on the one motion, one vote portion of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve items 7 through 15 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 7 and 8 are final action unless appealed within seven days to the City Clerk's office. Items 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are final action unless approved to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
We'll now go to the public hearing portion of the agenda, beginning with item number 16, which is SUP 55390. The applicant owner is Earl M. Morimoto Trust. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed off-premise sign at 3838 Meadows Lane in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as I manage this property for Mr. Morimoto.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff, may we have a report?
Mr. Chairman, the proposal to install an off-premise sign is in close proximity to low-density residential neighborhoods, the South and West, fails to comply with the objective 2.4 of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan, which is to ensure the quality of an existing residential neighbors are maintained and enhanced. Since the proposal is not in accordance with the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan, it does not meet the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan area, as well as cannot be conducted in a harmonious, compatible manner with the surrounding land uses, staff recommends denial. Thank you.
Thank you. We hear from the applicant, please. Good evening. If you could have your name and address.
Good evening. Pat Sheehan from the Law Firm of Fenimore Craig on behalf of the applicant, 300 South Forest Street, Suite 1,400, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Okay, you want to tell us about it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. The proposed off-site sign, according to the staff report, adheres to all minimum code requirements. The sign is located in a business corridor, basically on the southeast corner of the mall at the corner of Meadows and Valley View. It's the exact type of location where a sign of this nature should belong. The one area that was mentioned by staff is the effect on the neighborhood. I brought a sign here today if it could be put up, please, to show that, in fact, it really will not impact any neighborhood whatsoever. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the area, but there is a brick wall that goes along Meadows Lane there. There are no homes even close to this proposed sign. The arrows that I'm showing you show that the distances are 925-plus square feet from the corner there. In addition, anybody that would be in their backyard would have a six-foot wall in front of them anywhere, anyway, they wouldn't be able to see the sign whatsoever. This would be a very good thing for the neighborhood. It's an area that could use some picking up, and the sign could be used to advertise for things like Larry's Meats, things like the Springs Preserve, and it's, if you, if you were a resident and you lived back there, I don't think you'd even notice it, and you certainly wouldn't care about it being there. You would, I believe, want the mall to do well and keep the mall there. It's a nice thing for the neighborhood, and we all know it's struggling a little bit. We can advertise for the businesses in the mall through the sign. The sign is, represents a creative design to tie into the art and architecture of the center, and it's positioned to limit the normal, to limit, basically, the viewing to Valley View. There'll be no flashing to cause any problems with traffic, and the center of the proposed sign is located on an 80-plus-acre regional mall, exactly where you'd expect to see a sign like this. The commission has approved signs like this in the past within the mall, and my client has owned this property since the 1980s. He's been a good property owner. He's a good individual, and he will certainly make sure that the content on this sign is appropriate, and looks forward to your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Boner?
Yeah, well, I have a little feel for the residential, but I have more of a feel for the Springs Preserve itself, and in a sense, you'd be commercializing what I think is one of our better public facilities. And not only that, your ability from that one spot to freely advertise anything, not just the commercial center that's in the vicinity, is a little disturbing. Now, I note that the whole center is broken up into several parcels, and technically, an on-premise sign would be restricted to this subparcell, but in a freestanding sign, you could not only advertise the center, but anything in town, period. So I object to the proximity of Spring Preserve and the ability of you to just advertise anything whatsoever.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
Welcome. Yep, thank you, and pardon me for being late. I spoke to Commissioner Quinn on this item and to get a gauge on it, and her, I believe, in the councilwoman's office is still of the belief that the fact that this sign is in a redevelopment area, and it does not meet the goals and objectives and the policies of the Neighborhood Revitalization Section of the Code of the 2020 Master Plan, so therefore, I will be supporting the request of staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item 16, abeyance SUP 55390, follow the staff's recommendation for denial.
Please vote, and note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's offices in 10 days.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to related items, number 17 and 18, beginning with item number 17, which is MOD 56652. The applicant owner is Centennial Azure LLC. For possible action on a request for a major modification of the Town Center land use plan to amend the special land use designation from SX-TC, which is Suburban Mix Use Town Center, to GCTC, General Commercial Town Center, on the north side of Azure Drive, west of Tenaya Way, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 18, SDR 56653, for possible action request for a site development plan review for a proposed 22,625-square-foot motor vehicle sales new facility with accessory auto repair use. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff is in support of the proposed major modifications to the Town Center land use plan to allow the subject property to be designated to general commercial as the proposed amendment is incompatible with the surrounding general commercial properties to the east and west. Furthermore, staff is in support of the proposed site development plan review as it is general conformance with the Town Center development standards and will facilitate a use that can be conducted in a compatible and harmonious manner with the surrounding land uses. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, good evening. If you give us your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Mark Petch, Vetalago Petch Architects, 3535 Executive Terminal Drive, Henderson, Nevada. I'm the architect of record on the project here, representing the owner tonight. We've been working with staff on the project, and we concur with their recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Sir, if you'll come up and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Peter Janney. I live at 6872 Deer Isle, and I just wanted to support this applicant. I went to the neighborhood meeting, and it's a compatible project with the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Janney. Any other members of the public wish to heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners on a motion.
Happy to make a motion, Mr. Chair. Move to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 17, MOD 56652.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number 17 carries.
Item 18, SDR 56653. My motion is to also follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number 18 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 17 and 18 will be heard at the City Council meeting of January 21st, 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Now, moving now to related items, 19, 20, 21, and 22, beginning with item number 19, which is MOD 566, excuse me, MOD 56661. The applicant is Richmond American Homes. The owner is Vista Verdi Holdings LLC. For possible action request for a major modification of the Town Center land use plan to amend the special land use designation from LTC, Low Density Residential Town Center, to ML-TC, which is Medium Low Density Residential Town Center, at the southeast corner of Deer Springs Way and TP Lane in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 20 is WVR 56662. For possible action request for a waiver of Title 19.02.140 to allow two external intersection offsets of 191 feet where 220 feet is required, staff is recommending approval. Related item number 21 is SDR 56663. For possible action on request for site development plan review for a proposed 28-lot, single-family residential development, staff is recommending approval. Final related item number, is item number 22, which is TMP 56664. For possible action on request for a tentative map for a 28-lot, single-family residential subdivision, staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to build 28 new homes on a single infill parcel of land at the corners of Deer Springs Way and TP Lane and Echelon Point Drive and TP Lane. Since development of this density art not permitted in the existing LTC designation, a major modification of the Town Center land use plan will be necessary to change this designation to medium-low Town Center, which allows up to eight dwelling units per acre. Three different floor plans are proposed, each containing two stories and front-loaded two-car garages. The development pattern on this block supports higher densities, making the current modification request appropriate. Due to the width of the development parcel, a waiver of intersection offset distance is requested, which staff also supports, as the development will otherwise conform to the Town Center development standards in Title 19, staff recommends approval of the associated site development review and tentative map requests with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Bob Groenhauer, 8345 West Sunset Road. I'm here representing Richmond American Homes in this matter. If I could get your attention to the overhead, please. I have an aerial map to show you the location of our property. We have approximately grossed about five acres, but it comes out to net about 3.9 acres. It's an infill piece of property. You have Deer Springs to the north, to the west of us is TP, and to the south of us is Echelon Point. We're asking for a major modification in this area from low Town Center to medium-low Town Center. As a matter of fact, the 28 homes that we are proposing are larger lots than the lots that are already existing to the east of us in this area, and I think, as staff has pointed out in their staff report, it's anywhere from 500 to 800 square feet per lot that we are actually larger than the adjacent lots that are existing in this area. And with the fact that the staff has done such a tremendous job with their analysis with the staff reports for these five items, they're recommending approval for each of these items. I won't go into great detail outside of just asking you to approve these five applications subject to staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Groenhauer. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Coming up, sir, if you'll give us your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, my name is Peter Janney. I live at 6872 Deer Isle. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the HOA that is directly north of the property across Deer Springs, and this is a, I went to the neighborhood meeting, and this is an appropriate project for the density, not just on the east and west, but also in our HOA. It's very similar in size and lots. So this is a great project to get that property filled in and not have something more objectionable there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this, on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners or a motion. Commissioner Boner? Need to turn your mic on.
Knowing that we're moving smoothly through the agenda, I thought I'd throw a little sparkle in here. I'm one, I'm one person who doesn't like giving the external offsets away. In some cases, they can be dangerous, and in this case, you had a piece of ground with enough flexibility for floor plans where you could have put at least one of those intersections to meet the distance required under a normal color. In fact, you probably could have met both sides away from TP Lane. Nonetheless, I will support the application, and I wish you'd have a little more pressure on the engineers that are used in these processes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Sladman?
Yes, Chairman, through you, question for Mr. Groenhauer. The Town Center Residential Collector requires 36-inch box alternating shade trees and flower and trees. Can you tell me why y'all decided to put in 24 and 36 and not just meet the basic standard of putting in 36?
We are, one of, I'm sorry, I shouldn't let you finish. One of the conditions of approval on the site development plan review is to meet the code requirement, and we're going to be meeting the code requirement on that.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
I'm ready to make a motion if there are no other comments. Starting with item 19, MOD 56661. My motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item 19 carries.
Item 20, WVR 56662. Motion is to also follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item 20 carries.
Move to approve, item 21, SDR 56663.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item 21 carries.
And finally, item 22, TMP 56664. Also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item 22 carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 19, 20, 21, and 22 will be heard at the January 21st, 2015 City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Moving on now to related items, numbers 23 and 24, beginning with item number 23, which is VAR 558- which is VAR 55892. Applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow deviations from the street naming guidelines and street naming configuration sections of the City of Las Vegas Street Naming and Addressing Assignment Regulations two thousand and nine edition on Horse Drive between the US ninety-five and Iron Mountain Road, Fort Apache Road between the US ninety-five and Moccasin Road, as well as on Wallop Highway from Grand Teton Drive to Moccasin Road respectfully in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Related, excuse me, staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-four is SNC 55060 for possible action on a request for multiple street name changes from Horse Drive to W Sky Canyon Park Drive between the US ninety-five and Iron Mountain Road, and then from Fort Apache Road to North, to and Sky Canyon Park Drive between the US ninety-five and Moccasin Road, and from Wallop Highway to Sky Village Road between Grand Teton Drive and Moccasin Road. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the City of Las Vegas is requesting that the current street names of Horse Drive, Fort Apache Road, and Wallop Highway be renamed within and on the boundaries of the Kyle Canyon Master Plan community. With the recent acquisition of the community by a new master development company, the city is seeking to create a sense of place by renaming the streets in a manner reflecting the branding of the community. The requested street name chains are in conflict with two sections of the City of Las Vegas Street Naming and Addressing Assignment Regulations of the two thousand and nine edition and require a variance to be approved. Staff can support the proposed variance in street name change applications as the street naming configuration will not pose any concerns regarding life safety issues stemming from first responder confusion, as well as the amended street name configuration will give the surrounding community a greater sense of identity. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Bob Gronhauer, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the Sky Canyon Group, who's developing the Master Plan community. We've been working very close with the City of Las Vegas on these matters, and we appreciate their support on this and taking the lead on the application itself.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve item twenty-three VAR 55892, following staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-three carries.
I also move to approve item twenty-four SNC 55060, following the recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-four carries.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-three and twenty-four will be heard at the January twenty first, two thousand and fifteen City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Now, moving on to related items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, beginning with item number twenty-five, which is VAR 56629. The applicant owner is Main Street Development LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow four parking spaces, where eight spaces are required for a proposed multifamily residential development at six zero one East Bonneville Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-six is VAR 56630 for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot front yard setback where ten feet is the minimum required for a proposed multifamily residential development at six zero one East Bonneville Avenue. Staff is recommending approval. Last related item is twenty-seven, which is SDR 56632 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed four-unit multifamily residential development with waivers to allow zero-foot landscape buffers along the south side and west property lines, where a minimum ten-foot wide buffer is required, and zero-foot wide landscape buffers along the east and a portion of the north property lines, where a minimum six-foot wide buffer is required on zero point one nine acres at six zero one East Bonneville Avenue. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, although the subject site is located outside of the downtown Centennial Plan, this proposed multifamily development will serve the downtown area. In regard to the landscape buffer waivers, the applicant is proposing to provide perimeter landscaping along the Bonneville Avenue and Sixth Street. However, this proposed, the proposed trees and trubs would be located within the right-of-way and cannot be counted as part of the required onsite landscaping, and staff is recommending approval as this will increase the streetscape of the street. In addition, the proposed multifamily structure does not adhere to the minimum front yard setback requirements and, or the parking requirements. The proposed development is consistent with policies of two point one five and two point six two of the Las Vegas two thousand and twenty Master Plan, which encourage neighborhood revitalization through a variety of incentives, including the relaxation of setback requirements and the develop of two, three, and fourplex housing opportunities. In addition, the applicant is proposing to design and construct a building to meet LEED Silver Certificate standards. And for these reasons, staff recommends approval of the site plan review and all related applications and waivers.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant. Good evening. If you have your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Tom Schuman. I'm a principal with Main Street Development, and we'll be for you this evening for hopefully approval on our proposed site development plan for a four-unit multifamily project at the corner of Sixth and Bonneville. And basically, I'm here to answer any questions. We certainly agree with staff and their recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Saying none, I will close public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. It looks like Commissioner Sloman, you're first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to disclose, I'm a town home builder in the downtown area. I don't see this as a conflict of interest, as I, you know, encourage more people to come in and construct projects. So my penance judgment wouldn't be affected based on my occupation. I think this is a great, great project. You know, you're one street over from the Centennial Plan. Actually, I think the dividing line of the Centennial Plans on Sixth Street, if you're on the other side of Sixth Street, you wouldn't even have that parking variance because the automatic application of parking standards wouldn't apply to you. But seeing as you're not in the Centennial overlay district, you're still providing these fifteen-foot wide sidewalks and pathways, and you're putting all this landscape, landscaping in as if you're in it. And most developers who come to us don't want to provide any of that landscaping. So I applaud you for, for doing that and bringing a really nice development to the City of Las Vegas. I'm always preaching that we need more and more residential in the downtown area, and I hope this isn't your only project. I hope you have plenty more that come before us. The whole thing about the four parking spaces, I don't think the city considers tandem parking spaces as anything greater than one space. However, there is eight parking spaces, so it's not like we're really reducing the parking on this project anyways. And altogether, I just hope you, you get approved, you really push forward, and you really make this project, you make a run at this project and get it built as quick as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner. We actually have acquired four parcels within the neighborhood and looking ultimately to develop all four.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Truesdale, you were next, and then Commissioner Bonner.
Yeah, I received a text message earlier today from somebody I believe is, is involved in this project, so I will abstain on this item based on that. Just, I didn't have time to verify anything, so I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale, and then Commissioner Bonner.
Yeah, it's, I wanted to commend you. I think it's a very imaginative solution for the property. But the only concern I have, and it's probably a future one, is that any landscaping you're putting in the right-of-way is going to look very luscious to some road planner someday that wants to expand Bonneville. So if you know something about that, not, not ever going to expand, I'd like to hear it. Otherwise, I'll also support the project.
It, there's an interesting parcel. This was the sole parcel along that section of Bonneville that didn't give up a right-of-way towards the expanded Bonneville corridor. We're providing that right-of-way on our property. So actually, there was only a five-foot walk, and we're adding additional ten feet to make the fifteen-foot wide right-of-way, pedestrian right-of-way along Bonneville. Dick, as far as I know, Bonneville is at its full development along that section from Las Vegas Boulevard to Maryland Parkway? Except, well, along that corridor up to the last lot on the corner of Bonneville and Maryland, which is into the right-of-way.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item number twenty-five VAR 56629, I would move to approve, following staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-five carries. Noted the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you.
Got a couple more.
Mr. Chairman, item number twenty-six VAR 56630, move to approve, following staff's recommendation and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-six carries.
And Mr. Chairman, item twenty-seven SDR 56632, I'd move to, move to follow the staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item twenty-seven carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Now, moving on to related items twenty-eight and twenty-nine, beginning with item twenty-eight, which is VAR 56668. The applicant owner is Nevada Legal Services, Inc. and Sixth Street Strategic Solutions LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a ten-foot tall wrought iron fence and block wall along the north property line and a portion of the east and west property lines, where eight feet is the maximum height allowed on zero point five one acres at five two zero to five three zero, South Sixth Street in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. I had a related item number twenty-nine is SDR 56670 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed forty thousand square foot office building with a waiver to allow fifty percent of the first-story facade to align along the property line where seventy percent is required and a waiver of the Downtown Centennial Plan Parking Lot Screening Fence Standards. Staff is also recommending denial on this one. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, just before planning commission, staff received a request by the applicant to withdraw the variance without prejudice. I think if we could do that procedurally first, because that changes our staff report recommendation, and then I can go into the staff report. So if we can turn it over to the applicant to do that, we can procedurally get rid of that item, and then we can move forward on the site plan.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Curran, Ballard's Bar, one hundred North City Parkway, appearing on behalf of Nevada Legal Services. As noted, our architects did submit a request to withdraw the variance. Instead of building the fence to a ten-foot elevation, we're going to build it eight feet high. That solves problems, I believe, and I'll wait for the rest of the staff report in light of having noted that withdrawal of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. I think we have to vote on this. Am I correct, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first of all, do any members of the public wish to be heard pertaining to the variance? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners or a motion. Commissioner Sloman, if you'll give us a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item twenty-eight VAR 56668, I'd move to withdraw this item.
I'm not sure that's what we're trying to do. I think what we need is a motion that approves the withdrawal of the, of the, well, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That would be a withdrawal without prejudice for the applicant, is the request.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would make a motion to withdraw without prejudice, item number twenty-eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to withdraw without prejudice, item number twenty-eight carries. Now, we'll move on now to item number twenty-nine. I'll go ahead and reread it. This is SDR 56670 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed forty thousand square foot office building with a waiver to allow fifty percent of the first-story facade to align along the property line where seventy percent is required and a waiver of the Downtown Centennial Plan Parking Lot Screening Fence Standards in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, can we have a report?
Mr. Chairman, with the removal of the request for the variance, the applicant is proposing now an eight-foot tall wrought iron fence along a portion of the east property line, and staff is supporting that as, as it's, it's still not meeting the technical portion of the code, but it does provide and work to incorporate with the entire project itself for their parking. Staff finds that the requested seventy percent requirement for the bill-to line for the parking garages, we can support that as it's minimal in nature. It's only four, four feet of setback that's being landscaped along a parking area that's going to be screened, and that's appropriate. So staff finds that the site plan review is appropriate at this location, is now recommending approval. Please note, we do have a condition change, the condition number five, to replace the words "ten-foot wrought iron fence" with the words "an eight-foot wrought iron fence."
Thank you. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Bill Curran, Ballard's Bar, one hundred North City Parkway, appearing on behalf of the applicants. I think I have learned I should quit while I'm ahead. We are in compliance with the staff recommendation. We'll answer questions. My architects are here if you have technical questions, but I think we're going to have a very attractive building. If you can go to the overhead, I'll just show you one or two of the small features. You can see we're going to incorporate a enclosed area that will have a two-story patio kind of effect. On the north side of the building, there's going to be a one-story landscape building there that will provide a, sort of a fresh air location for the occupants of the building. We think that this is going to be novel and attractive and enhance the neighborhood there. So without beating it too badly with that, I will just simply ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Sir, come on up, please.
Commissioners, I'm Tom Schuman again. We own the property directly across the street. We met with our neighbor and shared our visions for that intersection, and we're fully in support of what they're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners and/or a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a few comments. At the beginning, I was a little concerned. I talked to Bill, Bill Curran. He provided additional documentation, and what, what I heard with the getting rid of that variance, bringing it from a ten-foot fence to an eight-foot fence, I'm really comfortable with this project. I actually think it's designed brilliantly, just great-looking design, another great-looking building for downtown, great services that you're providing for the community, and I'd really like to see this project get built, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, before we do a motion, I've got a added condition.
Sure.
For this project, the SDR, item number twenty-nine, would like to add a condition that says, prior to the submission of construction drawings, the applicant shall submit revised floor plans that do not show the building encroaching within the required dedication area at the northwest corner of Bonneville Avenue and Sixth Street.
Thank you. Ms. Curran, you accept that condition?
We accept that condition.
Okay, we'll entertain the motion with the condition.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number twenty-nine SDR 56670, I'd move to approve with the added condition of Department of Public Works and with revising number, condition number five, changing that from a ten-foot fence down to an eight-foot fence. five, changing that from a ten-foot fence down to an eight-foot fence.
Is that the condition? It stayed okay. Motion to approve item twenty-nine carries.
Mr. Chairman, item twenty-nine is final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Move on now to related items thirty and thirty-one, beginning with item number thirty, which is VAR 56675. The applicant is Nevada Hand Development. The owner is Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. For possible action on request for a variance to allow one-hundred-and-forty-one parking spaces where one-hundred-and-sixty-eight are required at five-zero-three Northland Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Related item thirty-one is SDR 56676, for possible action on request for a major amendment to plot plan review, Z dash zero-one zero-eight dash eighty, for a proposed eight-hundred-and-fourteen square-foot maintenance building and a four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eleven square-foot clubhouse with a waiver to allow a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer where five feet is required on a portion of the southern property line within an existing one-hundred-and-twelve-unit multifamily development at five-zero-three Northland Boulevard in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, can we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the variance is self-imposed and is recommending denial of the variance and subsequently the site plan review.
Thank you. Commissioner Goines, real quick.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to abstain on this item. My company provides funding, Workforce Investment Act funding to the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, so I'll be abstaining on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Goines. If we could hear from the applicants, please?
Good evening. Bob Feibleman with Nevada Hand, Two-Ninety-Five East Forum Springs, Suite One-O-One.
John Anderson, Seventy-two-Fifty Peak Drive.
Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, we have read through the conditions from staff, and we concur with their conditions, but we'd like to take a minute to address the requested waivers and variances. First, with the landscape buffer, if you can see on the overhead, I'd like to point out that the, on the far west side of the property, what we're asking for is to extend the existing buffer that's been, that exists now, an additional thirty-six feet to the west, which is a small portion of the whole hundred-twenty-foot, or twelve-hundred-foot property line there to the south. The adjacent land uses are C-one to the south and C-one to the west, so we don't feel that there's a major impact. Staff's recommendation was to not allow the hardship claim. We would like to combine the Activity Center and the workshop, combine them into one building. From the Regional Housing Authority maintenance standpoint of security, it's more beneficial to them to have that in that location. To address the parking variance, this facility was built in the early eighties, originally with a hundred-and-fifty parking stalls. Sometime in the last few years, several apartments were converted into accessible units. We had to remove some of the parking stalls to accommodate accessible routes from the public way to those units, so that reduced us down to a hundred-and-forty-four stalls. We are proposing to eliminate three stalls to accommodate the new Activity Building, which we feel is a good addition to the residence of this complex. We want to point out that this is a low-income housing. With most of the occupants within this facility are, their income levels below the fifty percent median income for most Americans. As such, the ratio of cars that they have per household is significantly less than what you would traditionally have in a multifamily housing. A recent review and audit by the Southern Nevada Housing Authority indicated that sixty-three of the hundred-and-eight, or hundred-and-forty-four stalls were being occupied. So with that consideration, we would ask for your approval on both the waiver for the variance for the buffer and the parking.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say something, sir?
Well, I'd just like to add that we are acquiring this property and refinancing it and remodeling it and revitalizing it totally.
Thank you. Do any other, do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I met with the applicants, and substantially what they said today was the same as what they showed me previously. I mean, it's not a large or huge variance that their request in a hundred-and-forty-one parking spaces where one-hundred-and-sixty-eight are required. It's a multifamily complex right now. No matter what, it's still going to be a multifamily complex, and I do feel that the applicants justified the reasoning for only having a hundred-and-forty-one parking spaces, and I feel comfortable with this and think I could support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, Commissioner Sloman, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the reasons you just stated, I'll make a motion to approve item number thirty, item number thirty, VAR 56675.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number thirty carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines. Wait a minute, I think, you think voted?
I meant to abstain. Please note that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, move on to item thirty-one. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on item thirty-one, SDR 56676, I'd move to approve, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number thirty-one carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty and thirty-one are final action unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Going on now to item number thirty-two, which is SUP 56641. The applicant is Yasenia Felix Rodriguez, owner Mohave Development Group. For possible action on request for a special use permit for a proposed two-thousand-and-sixty-two square-foot beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment within an existing restaurant with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a house of worship use where four-hundred feet is required at Twenty-three North Mohave Road, Suite D in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a church-house of worship use represents a hundred percent reduction from the required four-hundred-foot distance separation mandated by Title Nineteen. Although the proposed beer-wine cooler on-sale use would be ancillary to an existing restaurant use, the use cannot be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the surrounding uses of the area. As a result, staff recommends denial. Please note, additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi.
Hi, good evening. If we could have your name and address, please?
Yasenia Felix, at Twenty-three North Mohave Road, Eight-Nine-One-Two.
Thank you.
Okay. What happened is I need to get my license because I'm losing money. Our culture is like, the type of food I serve is seafood, and it goes with a cold beer on the side. Once the people, they find out that I don't have alcohol, they just leave. They don't care about the good food I serve, and I feel so stressed because I really want to keep it, be on business, you know? I think I'm losing money.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Hi, my name is Kristen Branish Fallon, and I'm representing the partnership that owns the property that Twenty-three Martha Mohave D is on, as well as two adjoining properties. I did have our approval cards for those three properties for the business for this variance. I just wanted to say that Yasenia is very hardworking. She's worked a year to make this restaurant successful, and I'd like to see her be able to recognize her dream of having a full-service restaurant. I've talked to all of our tenants in that area, and we do not have opposition. And one thing I wanted to say about the church, they've worked very hard to take a storefront building and make it make a beautiful church, a place of worship. They do good work with Three Square and everything else. However, when a church grows, they're going to eventually outgrow their rented space, break ground, and leave us. At least, that's their hope. When our other business tenants grow, they grow along with the building. I think the restaurant is going to be a really good anchor for that property and improve the general area.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'll just express a few things, and we'll see where this goes. Usually, I'm not the one who will grant, like, distance separation, you know, especially when it's a hundred percent. However, I know this area really well. It's a small part of my ward, not far from my house, and it's an industrial district. And, you know, if it was a liquor store that was off-site, sells, or off-sells of alcohol or beer, wine, whatever, I would be absolutely against, absolutely against that. But I'm not necessarily the person that's opposed to having a cocktail or alcoholic beverage in conjunction with a mill, especially in this particular area. Another thing that makes me feel this way is that they really didn't try hiding it from the church. There was actually, if you look in the backup, there's backup showing that they actually wrote the church a letter and reached out to them. And this was one of the items that I set up. I'm going to wait to see if there's a lot of opposition that shows up tonight. If the church shows up in opposition, then we would take a look at that and maybe vote against this. However, nobody showed up in opposition, so I do feel comfortable with this, and that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bonner?
Yeah. First clarification, is this beer/wine, or is this hard liquor, too? Because...
Wine.
Beer and wine.
That's it.
I mean, after, I've served on two different boards, two different church boards. For the most part, they just don't voice their opinion, even though they have one, just because they don't want to make waves by being a church where they are. But still, again, not seeing anything from the church, I guess I'm not going to oppose this one. That's a little different than supporting, and I'm not going to oppose this one.
I was listening to the comments, and it appears that you're there here for the long term, and that's probably what turned me on, turned me towards your direction, and I'm going to be supporting this. Anybody else wish to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your investment and your commitment for the landlord's rep or whatever. How long has the church been there? I'd like to know. I mean...
A couple of years.
Need to come back? Need to come up here?
We need you to come up to the podium, ma'am.
The church has been there two or three years. Before that, it was a laundromat.
But the church is an established church, and it has an established...
Yes. However, being a church, they're only there certain times during the week. They're not there seven days a week during the day. They have maybe a couple of evening meetings. They have the one Three Square program where they distribute food, and then, of course, on Sundays.
And they distribute food?
There also isn't any outdoor areas where church members would congregate and would see people coming and going from the restaurant or anything like that.
Thank you. But you do have a Three Square program, so you...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
You have a Three Square program where you distribute food for families and such to the church, or the church does? I just, I mean, it's not like the church moved in there a week ago, and I understand the restaurant being here. We have hundreds of churches in West Las Vegas. We have churches all over this town, and we've been very specific about those waivers, and I, quite honestly, haven't seen a bending over backwards for liquor sales as it relates to a waiver from a church. So I'm going to follow staff's recommendation on the denial, but we'll see how it goes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner...
Mr. Chair, I appreciate Commissioner Truesdale's comments, because I feel the same way. We have created a code that protects houses of worship and says, you know, we want a minimum distance separation, and I think without good justification, we should keep that in place, and so I'm inclined to follow staff's recommendation on this one as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Anybody else wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate everybody's comments. I just, I don't see the problems of urinating in parking lots and breaking bottles and people driving out intoxicated from these restaurants, and that's, I think, where the difference is amongst myself and other people's opinion, which I do appreciate who sit on this board. So, item thirty-two, I'm going to stick with my initial thoughts, and item thirty-two, SUP 56641, I'd move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Okay. Okay. Looks like it's three-three. The planning commission has no recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go to the January twenty-first, January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen city council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. I hope I can get it, because if I don't get the liquor license, I think I'm going to close my restaurant. I'm not going to be able to survive.
Thank you. Going on now to item number thirty-three, which is SUP 56658. The applicant is G-Three Labs, LLC. The owner is Desert Inn Property, LLC. For possible action on request for a special use permit for an alternative parking standard to allow eight parking spaces where twenty-six spaces are required for a proposed laboratory, medical, or dental use at three-two-one-six and three-two-two-zero Procyon Street in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has submitted an alternate parking demand analysis that substantiates a reduced number of parking spaces. Primary justification for reduced parking is based on the fact that no customers will be visiting the site. All specimens will be picked up and brought to the lab by an employee. A total of seven employees are projected for this project, with up to three additional employees once the business grows. Existing eight parking spaces will meet this demand for this specific use. A condition has been added for the alternate parking demand to expire when a laboratory, medical, or dental use is no longer in business on the site. Staff supports this request and recommends approval. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we hear from the applicant, please? And good evening. Names and addresses?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Lori Rogish, and I am with the Rogish Law Firm at one-one-nine-two-zero Southern Highlands Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here on behalf of my client, G-Three Labs. G-Three Labs is requesting consideration for an alternative parking standard. At this time, I would like to introduce Sean Fellow... At this time, I would like to introduce Sean Fellows, who will discuss this matter further. However, from a legal standpoint, G3 Labs' request is within the purview of this commission, and I am happy to say that staff has recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Sean Fellows, Rogish Communications Group, 11920 Southern Highlands Parkway, on behalf of the applicant. First, I want to commend this working with staff. We appreciate their work on this issue. We support the conditions set forth, and would ask you to support their recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Sir?
David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering, representing the client, as we've done the traffic study and demand analysis. And we concur with the staff's recommendations.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
I just want to disclose that my law firm has been involved with the Rogish family. We don't currently represent them, and so I just want to disclose that. I don't believe I have any conflict of interest that would make me vote either one way or the other, so I intend to vote tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Quinn wanted me to steward this item for, I know Mr. Fellows and I had some in-depth conversation on this item yesterday, late into the night. And so I wanted to ask a couple of questions about it with the use. This is a medical laboratory for testing, but can you tell us what's being tested here?
Yes, specifically, medical cannabis is going to be tested at the site.
And that, through those discussions last night, and again with the commissioner, a couple of other questions came up that I wanted to ask through Mr. Perrigo, that because there is no category specifically for this, will we, since we have approved, or since the medical marijuana applications have been thoroughly vetted through the state, and they've now come down to the city, as these items start to come back in now, I believe, for their final approval, is there going to be a category specifically for the cannabis testing? Or will we see applications come through under other categories that really don't explain what is being done?
Mr. Chairman, through you, at this time, we don't anticipate treating testing laboratories any different than any other use where testing occurs. It's allowed in industrial, and it's really treated no differently.
Thank you. With that, I know that there is a request for reduction in parking spaces. My only concern would be, will you be in compliance with ADA when it comes to persons with disabilities in terms of parking?
Absolutely. The plan calls for some changes, so it'll be 100 percent in compliance.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if that last gentleman could put his name on the record.
Yes.
Did he already get?
I'll do it again. It's David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer. Commissioner Goings?
I have no other questions. I'll be prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to follow staff's recommendations on item 33, SUP 56658, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item 33 carries?
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at the January 21st, 2015 City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Going on now to item number 34, which is SUP 5666, excuse me, SUP 56665. The applicant is Titan Auto. The owner is Gary Underhill. For possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed motor vehicle sales used use with a waiver to allow 2,628 square feet dedicated to the use, where 25,000 square feet is the minimum required, at 1711 South Main Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I spoke to the city attorney on this. I'm actually under contract with Casey Camus, the architect and representative, on two or three other projects at this time. And due to those reasons, I'll be abstaining on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Steph?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use would operate out of 360 square feet of office space located within the existing 27,000-square-foot commercial building. In addition to the 360-square-foot office, the applicant is proposing to occupy 14 existing parking spaces, or 2,268 square feet of the parking lot for vehicle display. As proposed, the motor vehicle sales use does not meet the minimum requirements proposed by Title 19, which requires 25,000 square feet for a motor vehicle sales used use. As such, staff finds that the request is not compatible or harmonious, or in conformance with Title 19, and is recommending denial.
Thank you. And can we hear from the applicant, please? If you can give us your names and address.
Casey Camus, architect, 652 Middlegate Suite B, Henderson, representing the owner.
Sean Anaya, 8329 Emerald Isle, owner of Titan Autos.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to make a little clarification. It's my understanding that the lease agreement the Titan Auto has with the landlord is not just those parking spaces, but if you'll look at what I have hatched, is that entire portion of the site, which is more like 13,600 square feet, which means we're a lot less disproportionate than the 26 and change. As far as compatibility, on this site, you'll see that there are half a dozen small used car sales. They're shown in the clouds. This is the proposed new site, just a couple of blocks away. All the Xs are like auto repair, auto-related, so it is compatible in the very near area. The rejuvenation in this area has creeped down to about Utah, but it hasn't really made it this far. Let me show you what kind of automobiles Titan Auto sells. One of these pictures is off of Google Earth Street View. That's this picture. You can see that they're...
If you don't mind, I'm going to need you to rotate them. They're upside down for us.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You can see that they're nice autos. He's not going to populate it with junkers. One of the things that, one of the things that you'll get with having an owner down here, which I'll kind of point out, that staff said that they didn't think it was an appropriate use, but I would suggest that any business willing to go into this area and take a risk and put their inventory out there is an appropriate use. He's going to have security, which will benefit the city and benefit this area, and start to clean it up and start to help rejuvenate it. Really, kind of what you're getting is, you could wait for the perfect use, but the owner of the building, his idea of the perfect tenant would be a warehouse. He doesn't want to sink a fortune into refurbishing the entire building. So what you've got with Titan Motors is basically a bird in the hand. Would you like to see a couple of pictures of the area and the state it is now?
Sure, whatever you want to show us.
Presently, it's, you see a lot of litter, and occasionally people sleeping. And I think I have one more here where they constructed a makeshift shack. No, that's not the shack. Out of... Oops, I've got my pictures mixed up. You can see that it's in need of some revitalization, and a lot of the downtown area has reached that revitalization, just not quite here.
That is the shack, and that's the person sleeping there.
Oh, yeah, that is my picture of my shack in the parking lot.
So they have put up a pallet with a plastic on there, and, you know, they sleep there at nights. And we're constantly monitoring the site, trying to avoid people from sleeping there at nights. Generally spoken right now, if you see in these pictures, both of them, I mean, there's always, you know, people sleeping on the floor, there is trash all over the place. So since we're in lease with the landlord, we always monitor it. We try to walk them out, try to keep the site clean. The property itself, it's kind of surrounded by a few vacant locations, so there's really not much, you know, around it that would come in, you know, in conjunction with this business. The only business that there is across the street is just Super Pond. The rest of it is just vacant land. At this time, there's really not much going on on the property. The building has been vacant for a little over four years, and the landlord is not planning on leasing it to somebody who just wants to open a retail location. So it's going to be mainly a warehouse. But our goal is, our plan is to down the line, if we do get the approval, to take over the building, and it'll be just part of our business. At this time, right now, it's just a vacant location, you know, but not a very attractive spot on Main Street. There's a lot of unusual activities that are going on, just because it's been vacant for so long. It is a parking lot, however, cars just come driving, flying through it. And once we go in there, obviously, we're going to have a security in there. All the access to the property are going to be open. We're not going to block anything. And we're just going to, you know, bring it back alive. We're going to spend some money on it. And just to start it, we're going to have about $200,000, $300,000 worth of inventory just sitting there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Sir, come on up, please, and if you'll give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Alex Stratilotov, 116 East Utah. May I just say that his current business, I don't know anything about the new one he's opening, but if it's any reflection of what his current business is now, I think it would be a tremendous advantage for anybody that lives nearby like myself. The place that he's at now, he's made it 100 percent better than what it was. There are a couple of other businesses that have been there longer than he has, and they haven't done half of what he's done to make his building look good, make the frontage attractive, and also, you know, safer for everybody around, at least in my opinion. As far as I can see, I don't see anything bad at all from what this gentleman's going to do. And as far as character goes, I've spoken with Mr. Anaya a couple of times, and he seems like a very upstanding and interested person in not just his business, but also the community in general. That's all.
Thank you very much, sir. Sir, did you like to be heard, please? Come on up, if you'll give us your name and address.
Good evening. Name's Carlos Carias. Address 1401 South Main. We're located neighbors from them. We own a shop over there, mechanic shop. It's been really good for us, you know, having them. We haven't had any trouble at all, and actually, it has helped in our business a lot.
All right, thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I live here in Las Vegas, 89102. I just wanted to jump up here because I see that he is slated for denial, and you guys happen to have a history of not supporting your small, local business owner. I noticed you guys really get behind big business. So before, I didn't have a chance, I wanted to get up here and say, please support your small business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Goings?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we've heard enough, I've heard enough testimony from folks in the area, but I think anytime you look at an area that tends to be dilapidated like this, and yet you have a business owner that's willing to come down and invest in the area, he may be the first one there, and he may set the tone for what happens within this area. Although I know the car dealerships haven't moved this far down, I think he, the gentleman here spoke about that, I think he raises a point. It is compatible in the area, because that's kind of what that area has been known for. And so I can support the request, because I would rather have a business there functioning and being able to revitalize this area, rather than have it sitting there and have more of the cardboard box-type houses that he displayed popping up. So, and again, I agree with Ms. Mona Lisa, that we, and I think we do support the small business, and we know that small business is the engine to the economy. And so with that, we've heard another shop owner explain how it has actually helped his business. So I would hope if we approved this, it would snowball and revitalize this area.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, this area, contrary to the feeling that it's still not transitioning, most of that vacant area you, you know, pointed out is owned by the Stratosphere, which has development plans in the works, then continually doing things. This was a vibrant market, and the landlord, for whatever reason, didn't want the market there, so it's been sitting empty for four years. We're going to take almost more than 25 percent of the parking, literally for a small office space, in use-wise. We kind of set a limit on the success of what's left there. You've got the White Cross Drug, which does very well. You've got Arapas across the street, which does phenomenal business. All small business people, they're making a great success there, following in what the plan that staff uses to view these things. So I just think their other location is, yes, it's got lots of cars, and, you know, some are nice cars, some are cars, but it's fenced off. I just wonder how long it'd be before we want to fence off a bigger area here and just lock up cars behind fences, hopefully to sell them on weekends. This, to me, doesn't fit as the best use for the area. May I add, Mr. Commissioner, that...
No, just let the commissioners finish. Thank you, though. Commissioner Boner?
We're here as a land use board, and one of the things that was said in the presentation was that this could cause a rejuvenation of the neighborhood. And quite frankly, I think a small, we'll call it a mini sale, car lot is the last use I could think of as commencement of an urban renewal. So I'm not going to support the application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner, any, Commissioner Goings, you want to make a motion?
I'll take a shot at it here on item 34, SUP 56658. I'll move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for denial, following staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Sloman.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to City Corps Office within 10 days.
Good night. Going on now to item 35 is ROC 562A1. The applicant owner is Dynamic Property Holdings LLC. The applicant owner is Dynamic Property Holdings, LLC. For possible action on request for a review of condition of an approved special use permit to delete condition number nine, to eliminate the requirement to construct school flashers on Azure Drive, and to delete condition ten, which requires a traffic impact analysis to be submitted that addresses bus turnouts, dedicated turn lanes, and right-of-way dedications at seven four eight five West Azure Drive in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, SUP five three nine seven oh was approved by the planning commission on June tenth of this year, subject to the conditions of the installation of school zone flashers and the approval of a traffic study. On August thirteenth of this year, permits for the subject site were inadvertently issued, and the school is subsequently opened. The school opened in violation of NRS, which requires a portion of Azure Drive to be designated as a school zone, and in violation of the approved conditions of SUP five three nine seven zero. When this violation was brought to the attention of the Traffic Ensuring Division of the Department of Public Works, the Traffic Division installed permanent school zone signs to achieve minimal compliance with NRS, and did several site visits to review the queuing as it relates to the public right-of-way. The additional, the original traffic study never addressed the impact of a school in this development, or the impact that this higher intense, intensity use will have on nearby intersections. Typically, static signs are adequate for school zones on streets with one lane in each direction and a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour or less. However, Azure Drive is a multi-lane street with a speed limit of thirty miles per hour. With multiple lanes and higher speeds, the static signs are often not sufficient to alert drivers to the school zone in time. School zone flashes are better at alerting drivers to the fact that they're driving through a school zone than are static signs. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this application.
Thank you. Can we hear from the applicant, please, and if y'all give us your name and addresses, please?
Uh, LeVar Windsor, seventy-four ninety-five West Azure Drive. I've, um, been located there since, um, um, October of two thousand and eight. And, um, there's, um... I guess there's, first off, um, this was just a little bit untraditional, the way that it came through the process. Um, and, um, I think there was, there's, there's a, I guess there was a reason for that. The building permit was issued, um, construction went underway, and then, um, uh, then there was a special use permit that was requested to be put in play. When we, uh, went through the process, we went, we met with the city building department to determine what was needed. We recognized the possibility of a special use permit, um, uh, needed. And, um, when we went down to the building department, we met with, you know, a few people, and, um, in fact, these gentlemen here, and, and, um, um, there was, it was discovered that, um, we were given the wrong information when we started the process, but having to get the school opened to meet the school year, um, they, they agreed to, you know, issue the building permit and, uh, and move, and move forward. Um, the only items in the, um, approval of the special use permit that we're here to discuss is nine and ten. Um, I think number ten is the, um... Traffic study? Um, and the, the site had a traffic study done, um, when all eight, uh, seven buildings were built, um, back in two thousand and, I, I believe it'd be five or six. And, um, as far as traffic and, and, um, uh, bus turnouts, sidewalk, um... In fact, let's look at the site plan there for a minute. Um, you can see, if you can get, so I can point. How do I make that larger? When the, when the, when the, um, traffic study was done, when this site map was approved, you'll note, you'll note that there's a ten-foot sidewalk that runs in the back of the project, project. It connects to the light up at, uh, Sky Point, which is just off the side of the map there, to the, to the, uh, west. And then it connects all the way down to the light that would be down at, uh, Tenaya and Azure. And, uh, that ten-foot sidewalk, uh, originally was in the plan to eliminate any kind of foot traffic along the Azure walkway area, as part of the master plan area, because that is a, um, uh, two lanes of traffic in both ways, but it has no parking lanes on the side of it. Um, and it's just part of a master plan design, so that, that sidewalk has been instrumental and, and great for the entire project. I think that more of that, in these kind of conditions, would be, uh, a good movement. But the point I'm getting at is, is that, um, the, uh, traffic study, or the impact study that would be done, would to, would be to gleam, um, what information? The, uh, the tenant that is in, um, this building here, which is twenty-eight thousand square feet, same size as this building over here, uh, Building A, um, currently has like three hundred people and three hundred cars that come in and out of it. You'll note by the site plan that there's four point three parking stalls per thousand square feet. The school requirement is two parking stalls per thousand square feet. Um, and, uh, to date, the school takes up less than twenty-five spots in the entire complex, um, 'cause there's nobody that goes, but teachers to work, and there's less than twenty-five people that work in the building, in that twenty-eight thousand square foot building. So there's not, so there's a, there's an easy two hundred parking stalls that are not used within the entire complex. There's a hundred and twenty-three sp- parking stalls dedicated to that building, that are certainly not being used. We're not introducing additional traffic that would cause more intersection traffic, or crosswalk traffic, or, or that was in the original study that was done for the site. Um, you know, we're not adding more bodies than when, it's, it's certainly less bodies, less cars, um, you know. And, um, there's, um, one of the things you might notice, and this is the, um, um, drop-off and pickup plan that was approved, um, in the original, um, request for a special use permit. And that queue line will, you know, if I've used this, uh, car, which is an eighteen-foot car, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll queue up all the cars that are necessary for anybody to be dropped off. It doesn't back up anything in the Azure area, and since the school's opened, um, been about a year now, um, there's, the, the pickup times are now, uh, two-thirty, three o'clock, three-thirty, four o'clock, just because of the different education things that they're doing with their students, and so on, et cetera. So the time that would affect the most people has been spread out. Um, and all of that has happened since we started this process. Um, and so, on the special use permit, I mean, on the, uh, traffic study issue, I'm not sure what we would gain. There's no new bus turnouts to be created, no new sidewalks to be created, no new s- street signs, or, or parking issues, or... So, you know, and, and, and I think there's one in the works right now, in that area, for us, for a development that's being, um, presented. So, um, that's, that's my request for why I would like to not have to spend the money that's not gonna get us anywhere. The, um, the other one on the flasher issues, I'm confused. Um, the, you know, when we did, when we started the whole process and research, you know, the NRS basically says that we're in, you know, that we're in legal guidelines of, of, you know, where of a thirty-five mile, or, excuse me, a thirty mile an hour street, um, and two lanes of traffic. And, and this document here represents the adopted statute that everybody uses in the school districts and everything. And it, you, you'll note in here that it says that, uh, flashers are installed on roadways with multiple lanes of normal speeds are over thirty-five mile an hour. Clark County is working with school districts to have flashers installed with the construction as newer schools and, you know, when money's available. It's a thirty mile an hour zone and a two-lane tra- a two-lane traffic, it's not more than thirty-five. There's a bigger issue here, though, one that we really should address. Um, since I've been, you know, in that complex, and I have all those tenants in there, the, the street, and the morant- the way that the street winds through the process, and all the, in the center median, all the, you know, thirty-foot palm trees, and palm trees on the side of the street, on both sides, um, the hedges that are designed to go up against the curb, and then there's a small three-foot walkway, and then more hedge. You know, there's a lot of beautiful landscaping there, but it does impede on line of sight. And so Azure's a confusing, confusing street. On further down Azure, it's a twenty-five mile an hour school zone, that's probably a zone because it's residential. Um, it's, it's still four lanes, it just has two parking lanes and two travel lanes. Um, there's been speed bumps, big speed bumps installed down there to slow the traffic down, even though that's marked twenty-five. We're thirty miles an hour, and then when you get up to Sky Point and go over the bridge, you know, it's thirty-five. So anybody that's traveling, say, east, uh, on Tropical, as it turns over the freeway, over the ninety-five freeway, um, it changes to thirty miles an hour, but they're already tr- traveling at a rate of thirty-five, forty miles an hour. And, uh, now that, then they see our school zone signs right there at the light, right at the traffic light, um, and they're on both sides of the street, not just in the middle, just on both sides of the street, they're already going faster than they should be going. That really should be a twenty-five mile an hour street. The whole street, all of Azure, should be twenty-five miles an hour, all the way down to Jones. The, the, I think...
Yeah, yeah, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Boner, I think you're getting a little bit of field from... We're here to deal with the land use and, and to deal with your conditions, not to try to pontificate on how everything's supposed to be.
The flashers, if we install the flashers, we're still gonna have line-of-sight problem, and we're not gonna slow the traffic, this, this still a school zone, it's still fifteen miles an hour. I think we should slow the traffic down. I think it would be far better to just make it a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone all the way through, because if we install the flashers, it doesn't change the problem.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna now open it up for discussion from the public, do any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Ma'am, if you could state your name and address, please?
Vicki Higgins, two oh five Norland Street, Las Vegas. I understand the complications with your location. I do not understand why we would ever not mark a crosswalk. I myself watched my eight-year-old daughter at the time almost get hit in an unmarked crosswalk. I think that our crosswalks need to be highly visible with either high-colored paint or flashers. And I understand there's cost involved, but if we watch the news, somebody gets hit every week in unmarked crosswalks, even marked crosswalks. So I feel that it's a very important to have crosswalks, especially in school zones, and, and that goes along with training of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard, sir, if you'll come on up? Please give us your name and address, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm JP Kemp, Kemp, Kemp Attorneys at Law, seventy-four thirty-five West Azure Drive, uh, Suite one-ten in Las Vegas. A person could not have picked a worse location to put a school than our professional office complex that we have there. Be that as it may, it's been put there, despite, it's, it's a terribly intense use, should never have been put there. But the fact is that it is there. Uh, now that it is with five hundred students at the location, to not have the flashers would be wholly inappropriate. The traffic, the, the line of sight, as, as is mentioned, it's a curving road, it's got lots of landscape. The cars have always driven through, I've seen, I've seen Ferraris going through there at seventy miles an hour. You need to have the flashers to warn the traffic. Obviously, you're gonna have some people that are gonna break the law no matter what, but you do need to have the school zone flashers, uh, to slow down the traffic there. I think also that the traffic impact analysis would be very appropriate. I think that the, uh, commission should deny this request. The school is there, you've got two car dealerships across the street, a third one looking to go in, the, the, uh, auto repair facility that's going in across the street. This is a commercial location. Where they're talking about it being twenty-five miles an hour with speed bumps is all the way down by Jones. It's at least two miles away, uh, in a residential, uh, area. This is definitely a commercial area, it's part of town center. It, it would be appropriate to put the flashers in, if you're going to have a school there, and, and it should have the, uh, the impact analysis done for the traffic, thank you. I, I, please ask you to deny the request.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, if you could give us your name and address, please?
Andrew Corwin, I'm the property manager for Building G on that property, seventy-four sixty-five West Azure. Uh, we concur with denial and with the comments made by Mr. Kemp and the lady before that. This has been a, an incredible problem and issue since it was first started. I have, I'll try to address strictly the, um, issues of the flashers and the, uh, parking route. This picture here, it's not a great picture, can you see it there? Uh, this is looking towards the property on Azure Drive. The thirty mile an hour speed limit sign is, uh, on the west end of Azure, behind where this picture was taken. The, um, current sign stating that to slow down for kids when they're present is right here before you get to the property itself, and does virtually nothing whatsoever. And you couldn't, you, you have no idea if there's kids there or not. You absolutely have to have flashers of some sort in this location. The speed limit sign coming the other direction is all the way at, uh, Tenaya, I believe. So the, the speed limit signs are at the farthest ends of Azure in this, uh, area. And i- in our opinion, to the safety of the, the, not just the children, but of everyone that is now starting to occupy that area, we really need those flashers. Uh, of concern to us as well is that the, uh, uh, the school was asked to do this, they did not comply. We reminded them several times, they were reminded by different parties, they claimed that they were doing that, they never did put them in, and now we find that, uh, they're asking that, uh, that be changed in a multitude of different ways. So we would like to see, uh, we, uh, the denial on that, and we would like to see those flashers put in.
Thank you.
With the parking situation, um, we would like to see a parking study done that takes into account, um, not just the overall area, but the other buildings in the property. Our building, Building G...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have parking before, so I...
Yeah, I, I agree. We're not really dealing with parking, we're dealing with removal of a couple of conditions, one being the flashers, and the other one being the requirement to do a traffic impact analysis.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about traffic, not parking. And I use the term parking, but I'm talking about the traffic, uh, route on this particular map that is different than the original map, uh, that was approved for the project. The original map showed, um, two r- routes of traffic. Uh, one coming through on the, uh, uh, north route, direct in front of the school, and a backup route that was intended to come back on the south side of the property, and behind our building, Building G. That has since been changed to only this route, which comes back and around on the south side of the property. And as you can see, there's only two areas that are affected by this. The, uh, directly affected that are not the school, one is the entrance way and the businesses that are right here, and the other is our building, Building G, of which our tenant is a dialysis clinic. So the traffic that is now a hundred percent coming through and around this building, and the, and where, uh, this tenant is open from four-thirty in the morning till six in the evening, we have about fifty patients a day. The impact has been substantial in every way possible, including financial, to, uh, how to deal and become a good neighbor with allowing this traffic here. We would like to see that, uh, a, a new study, or a, a study as required done, that would include, uh, taking into account the effect of all of the buildings, but especially our dialysis clinic, and how this is handled and where, uh, it will be applied.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Saying no, I'll close the public comment portion, I will allow the applicant a minute for rebuttal.
Thank you. The, um, not that this is the issue that's here, but the, uh, the, the impact along... If we were to make the route along all these buildings here, we'd impact all the complex, the entire complex. Um, the gentleman that was just up here manages the building, and he's, um, willing to sacrifice everybody else's issue for his own, not, so, um, the, my point that I was trying to get at was, is that if we just put flashers in, it's not gonna solve the issue. The issues that we were having, forget the school was there, the rate of speed down the road is too fast. It's thirty miles an hour now, it needs to be at least twenty, if it was twenty-five from one end of Azure to the other, everybody would drive the normal speed, they wouldn't be changing speeds. Like, when they're, when they come over the bridge doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour, they don't think to change...
When they come over the bridge doing 35, 40 miles an hour, they don't think to change the speed, now they're going down a hill in the picture the gentleman just showed you.
Yeah, but, but, I've listened to this enough, and I have a question that is kind of, is, you didn't raise the question of how bad the speed was, and you didn't raise the question of how you really were opposed to these flashers when you were leaving here and one happy guy to get your approval and go and build just what you wanted to build, and now you want to come back?
Sir, we didn't know those conditions.
You're not going to debate with me.
I'm telling...
All right, hold on, hold on. Let me just point order. When the commissioners are speaking, please don't interrupt, because now we're going to kind of take over, and we have our things to say. Go ahead, Commissioner Trusor.
This was a very difficult site for a school in the very beginning, but now you're coming back here, right out of the gate, wanting to get rid of flashers, and it's always some other problem, but the fact is, this probably was never the right location for the school that you wanted to build here, and you got your approvals and you built it. That's great. But without the flashers, I think you leave those kids at risk, and you leave other property owners at risk. Without the traffic study, you don't have a basis to find solutions for other traffic issues. The traffic study might help your argument about speed, but I think asking to have those two items waived when they're a public, one is a requirement, and the other one is a very big matter of public safety, I think as a school, is inappropriate, very inappropriate.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moody, I believe you had something to add real quick.
Yeah, thank you. So I always do my best before coming to these meetings, I have an office manager run a conflict check, but sometimes I never know before coming in. Mr. Windsor and I have known one another for a number of years, and over the past year, we have probably talked on the phone at least twice that I can think of, and I may have given you some legal advice unrelated to this, and therefore, out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any impropriety here, I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Bonner?
I think the problems...
Commissioner, you need to, thanks.
I think the problems that we're all talking about follow one big, I'll call it, mistake for the design of this, this commercial subdivision. The fact that the main entrance is at the peak of the inside of a curve, it doesn't make much difference how fast the car's going, because even at 25 miles an hour, that's an impossible intersection.
It's downhill.
Add to that the grade you're in, you're just, you're just in triple jeopardy. You can't change that now, at least, I don't know that you can, and you only have one, what I call an area of relief, I think there's a service drive at the very east end of the project that enters onto the road. But if this is your one and only ingress and egress, this is a lousy project regardless of the school. So if you're going to squeeze a school in there, do your part.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? I think we're ready for a motion.
Wait, wait, I just wanted to...
Sir.
I wasn't opposed to the flashers. You guys are misunderstanding what I was talking about. To just put the flashers up isn't going to create the safety issue that we have. It doesn't matter about the school, it's the downhill, when they come from the west going east, they're doing 35, 40 miles an hour. There's lots of accidents, we've repaired walls many times. So if we can make the speed limit from one end of Azure to the other...
Yeah, I understand your argument about the speed limit, but right now, we're here to deal with the land use issue that's specific to yours. We're not really, we don't really have the jurisdiction to deal with speed limits and things like that.
Is there any other, is there a couple of other traffic analyses going on right now?
You know, I couldn't answer that at this juncture.
I think there's one more going on because of the dockets you did to change the land use.
But, sir, what I'm going to do now is, because we're kind of getting out of bounds here, what I want to do now is allow a motion to be brought concerning your request to remove the two conditions, and that's really all we're here for. Yeah, I understand the speed limits and everything, but it still boils down, should you have those conditions removed or not? And everybody said their piece, I think, at this juncture that's going to. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for denial of item 35, you know, follow staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion denied carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Moody.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action unless appealed to City Court's office within 10 days.
And I take it the record will reflect that he abstained? Thank you. Okay, moving on now to Director's Business, which is TXT 56672. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. Discussion and possible action to amend LVMC Chapters 19.12 related to permitted uses and 19.18 related to definitions and measures to update the descriptions and definitions of various medical marijuana establishment uses, to address the definition of a standalone detached facility, and to provide for other related manners. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, just a brief bit of history. NRS 453A.350 provides for, medical marijuana establishment must be located in a separate building or facility. Consequently, Title 19 was initially amended to define a medical marijuana establishment as a fully standalone detached enclosed structure, and that applied to production facilities and cultivation facilities, but not dispensaries. Subsequently, the Nevada Division of Health and Human Services clarified what they meant by a separate building, and their clarification allows for dispensaries, cultivation, and production establishments under the same ownership and management to occupy the same space. As a result of that clarification, when people are coming in and applying for their medical marijuana establishments, staff had discussed the possibility of these establishments being allowed in the same space, even though our code did not allow it. So we had a number of applicants come forward, and we heard them at Planning Commission, where they had production and cultivation located together and/or with dispensary. As a result of the way our code was written, we had to table those items at City Council, and now what we're doing is bringing forward this text amendment, which would allow those establishments to be located together in accordance with a clarification that came from the state. So what this text amendment does specifically is removes that language that says fully standalone detached, and it just describes medical marijuana establishments, production and cultivation to be in an enclosed structure. It allows those to be located together, but not with other non-similar uses, other non-medical marijuana establishment uses. So to be very clear, what it does is it allows cultivation, production, and dispensary to be in the same building, but not in a building with another use that is not a medical marijuana establishment.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public which to be heard on this item? Ma'am, if you'll state your name and address, please.
Vicki Higgins, 205 Norland Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. As a cannabis advocate, I've been watching this process, and I'm very saddened by the fact that this got delayed by the miscommunication with the standalone type of building. I would hope that as patients, we've stage four cancer, people who can't wait a whole lot longer to get this medicine, if you, in your powers, in whatever you can do, help to fast-track this through and get these establishments open, many patients would be very thankful. And I know it's been complicated and frustrating, we are going where no one's gone before, but the delays are only hurting the patients. So thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ma'am. If you could give us your name and address, please.
Cindy Brown, Torrey Pines in Sahara, 89146, Miss Darkanian's area. When you said that there couldn't be another business in the building, like maybe it's a strip mall, is that what you're saying, that you can't have all three in one place if there's a used furniture store next door?
Director.
That is correct.
I think that might knock out some of the people that have applied for licenses. Being one of the people that helped change this law to give people this opportunity, I have been extremely disappointed in all of the procrastination and now the lawsuits. People are going to die. I wish you guys could understand that. Cannabis oil eaten in your body can cure cancer. In my case, it got rid of arthritis. In my husband's case, it did get rid of cancer. This is so important, I don't know how to make you people understand. This isn't about greed, this isn't about money, this is about people's lives and people dying. Please do this right, and stop with all the crap from all these rich people that just want to make money off of it. When we changed this law, we thought that the little guy, the people who understood, the people since 2000 who have been forced to grow their own and learn how to make this medicine, would be the ones that would be in the forefront and help other people. It's not working out that way, and we are very upset about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Once again, for the record, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I am a 25-year Nevada resident. I have lived 15 years here in Las Vegas. I am a proud medical marijuana patient. What Cindy says is true. Eventually, everyone will get an education, and they'll find out that marijuana is real medicine. We have been in this community, trying to come to every single meeting, including your planning commissions, and we have been told many times where the appropriate time to speak and such. I'm just hoping at the end, at the public comments, can you please give me the time to say a speech? I actually wrote one up. I'm so hurt, I come to all these things, and usually we're just kind of abayed back into the, you know, we'll get your comment later, we're laughed at or whatever, but this is really important. I hope that you keep this in mind. We are your constituents, we are not recreational users. I understand that this is about planning and permits for the zoning on the property. But there are, it's very interesting how you don't keep in mind that this is your community, this isn't something that you need to relegate to, often to, we do need to have integrated systems, let me say this. It would be silly not to have an integrated system, but if you're going to make it to where a furniture store or something can't be anywhere near, you really need to rethink these things. I'm sorry that I'm going off track, I'm really hurt. This is what happens to medical patients. So I'll come back on the public comments to say what I want to say, but I'm hoping that you give real consideration that this is an issue. This isn't something to make money on, you worry about who's going to get licensing, who can afford, who can keep the competition at bay. Really, keep this in mind, this is what your people want, and thank you, just keep that in mind.
Thank you. I'm going to have the director clarify something pertaining to your remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that it's drafted the way it is, staff has spent a lot of time in other states and working with other local governments and medical marijuana establishments, and the one thing that we found out and that we heard over and over again is that when a cultivation facility especially is located next to another business like a furniture store, that the oils permeate into those other facilities, and we've heard that the number one issue they have is businesses like a warehouse with carpeting or furniture warehouses or whatever, where the oils, the resins get into the fabric and you can't fix that, and it's a huge problem. Now, this does make this condition waivable, however, if in fact, it can be shown that the use can live side by side with another non-medical marijuana establishment type use. For example, if the owner of the building also has an adjoining shop in that building, and they're okay with the fact that some of those oils may escape into those, into those other spaces. So there is, there is a reason we wrote it this way, but it is a waivable condition if it can be shown that it can be harmoniously compatible with a non-medical marijuana establishment that's adjacent.
Thank you. Any other members of the public which to be heard? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Trusor, do you look like you're ready?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, only because I'm morally bound to do this, I'm going to go through a minor disclosure that I do have property that has a medical marijuana establishment as a tenant, and has nothing to do with this ordinance change, because it is a dispensary and this deals with cultivation and production, so I will vote on this change. We are not trying to delay anything for anybody. These are, as this process goes through, there are always things that we try to get done better. Nothing here is delaying people from getting their licenses and getting their locations and going through the process, they've all submitted. The lawsuits are a whole bunch of different animals to deal with, and that's their issues, not this board's or this commission's. So I hope you understand that. We don't, we don't craft this, this came to us to review and vote on in this meeting as a recommending board, and we will do so, and it, from what I understand, it came to us as fast as it, by law, it could get to us. So we do appreciate where you're at, and we do appreciate the hardships, the pain, and all the things that go on as this process has moved along, and government is an unruly animal. It's a horrible animal, actually, but it's the best thing we have, and it beats marching in the street, actually. So I'm going to support this change, because I think it clarifies one of the last issues. Doesn't mean that we might not see something else like this in another meeting, and we hope you come and visit us again on that one as well, or those, but like I say, we're trying to make this so it's, once everything is up and running, this works well for everyone, and so we don't have people trying to tear it apart from the inside, and so, but I do support this amendment.
Indirectly, it does involve dispensaries as well, because of the fact that now those three types of things can be integrated together, so indirectly, it does have some effect on the dispensaries. So, well, I mean, they can all be now joined together. Well, before, yeah, I know, before it was that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, before it was that the cultivation and the production had to be separate and apart, or standalone buildings, but now they can all be joined together, so that may be, you may want to just, that's just something that I think indirectly affects the dispensaries as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, just a comment to Mona Lisa and the rest of the crew that comes out and comments on this at every meeting. I think this is helping relax the rules, it's not putting, putting anything, any additional burden on. It scratches through a fully standalone detached enclosed structure, and just says an enclosed structure, so I think this kind of relaxes rules and helps more facilities be combined versus pushing us in the opposite direction, so I'll be supporting this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, on item 37 TXT 56672, I move to follow staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, before I vote, in looking at this language, since it does affect dispensaries, since I am the landlord of a building with a dispensary, that I don't believe it ultimately will affect it, but in the abundance of caution, I will abstain on this ordinance.
Motion to approve, item number 37 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Trusor.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Move on to the final item of the night, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion... The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Ma'am, good evening again.
Good evening. Once again, my name for the record is Mona Lisa Samuelson. I am a medical marijuana patient. I live here in Las Vegas. Uh, first off, I'd like to also give a shout out. It really is a different game here without our beautiful Commissioner Quinn. I hope, I know she's probably watching, so I hope that Vicki gets better quickly. It is a different game. It's so nice to have her here. She's a beautiful face. Anyway, to get on with it, thank you very much. This is the thing. When we come to these meetings, to have people explain to us as if we are normal human beings is a very nice thing. Thank you for that. Sometimes we don't get that. We come here, we don't know where to speak, we're looking for help. All we want to do is give our input. We are the medical patients that this law has been written for. We are trying our best to make sure that businesses do not get the best of us because as it is going, whether or not you realize this or not, they're going to sell us stuff that we don't even want. We are medical patients. We have learned to take care of ourselves better than smoking weed. So we need your help. We don't know government. We know how to help each other. We are a community. We need help from our community leaders. So thank you all for being good community leaders and giving us some respect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening again.
Good evening. Vicki Higgins, Las Vegas, Nevada. I just want to say thank you very much and again, please keep doing what you're doing. Let's keep it moving. Get the people the medicine as they need it. Thank you for listening. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to be heard under this agenda item? Saying none, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting for the...
Well, timeout.
Commissioner Truesdale?
I thought you were talking about that item there. Earlier this evening, we had a vote that affected, uh, an item I abstained on, which I have no problem how the vote came out. No one ever expects to, uh, have a client, uh, be successful in every vote they want. I, I don't make decisions for my clients on what applications they do and don't want to, um, submit to the city and how they want to proceed with them. So in that regard, I don't have anything of concern, but, and I have the utmost respect for, uh, Mr. Goines, or Commissioner Goines in this, in this process, but of late, uh, it, it becomes more and more, um, representative here that we get comments at this commission that, uh, the commis- the councilwoman told me to vote this way and I'm going to vote this way. And then tonight, when Byron says, I talked to Vicki and the councilwoman told her what she wanted, Vicki tells Byron what he wants, or what she wants, and Byron comes here and votes to support that, that to me is completely voids any, um, relationship that we come to these meetings with an independence of judgment to make a decision on any one item. Um, it, I can absolutely guarantee you under oath a thousand times, and I've never been asked by the person that appointed, the two people that have appointed me to this board to vote one way or another on any item. Do I understand they have projects that they may or may not be, um, concerned about? And it's my job to figure out whether, um, they fit with my independence of judgment to vote, but it, it's just very disturbing here to come to a meeting when, when applicants pay fees to the city, they meet with staff, they spend hours and hours and they come in here and they hear, "Well, I got a call from on high and I'm voting this way," when that's not the way this board was constructed. We are supposed to come here as seven individuals, give our opinions, hear the, hear the residents, hear the applicants, hear staff and make a decision. And we vote to recommend things on up to the council. That's the way it's set up by statute, by charter and by, by every rule that we've operated under. So I, I get offended when an applicant comes in, "Well, I talked to the councilman and you got to vote my," he says he's for it, so you got to vote that way. That doesn't tell me how I need to vote. That just means whoever made that statement was a fool for saying it to this board. They should have come here and made their arguments to this board, let us do our job. We spend, everyone in this, this commission here spend hours going through these agendas, researching, looking at properties and trying to make decisions. It isn't shorthand, it isn't, uh, I can phone one in. I put a lot of time into this. I know Mr. Goines, or Commissioner Goines puts a phenomenal amount of time. So does Commissioner, uh, Sloman. The chairman comes to more meetings than we do because he has a chairman's briefing and the vice chair as well and, and Commissioner Bonar. But we owe each other the absolute respect to come here and vote our independence of judgment. I, I would hate to think that we would take the direction or influence from some third party to make a vote here, which is in, in absolutely contrary to what we took an oath to do. So that, that's my concern. I don't have a, I could care less how the, uh, votes turn out. It's just how we're perceived and our moral compass and our ability to make the absolute right decision at this meeting at that point in time, not told how to vote before they get here. I, that, that's wrong and, and I think each of us would have believed that's wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
I need about fifteen seconds and, and Commissioner Truesdale, that's fine and well and, and that's your opinion of your perception. If anybody up here knows me on this board, nobody going to call me and tell me which way to vote. Uh, I'll listen to when people call, but at the end of the day, Byron Goines is going to make Byron Goines' decision. And, uh, yeah, we will get a call. I get a call from you from time to time when you got somebody coming on the board, but, uh, don't get it misconstrued, uh, Mr. Truesdale. Your perception is your perception and your opinion, but let me tell you this, when, when it comes to Byron Goines making the vote, I'm going to be independent and I'm going to vote the way I feel. And regardless of how you feel about it and what you think your opinion is, that, you can keep that to yourself. But if you look at the item tonight, uh, you, you, regardless of what, uh, Commissioner Quinn called or Councilwoman Tarkanian did, uh, I think when you saw that vote, I followed the recommendation of staff. Now, if that's your client and your mall and you got a problem with, uh, staff with a no vote on it, uh, I don't know what to tell you to do, but, um, you know, your perception of what you think I'm doing is your perception only and, uh, I think the way you described it tonight, you got it absolutely wrong. I'll rest my case on that.
With one last comment, I only brought back based on the words that you represented when you, when you talked about this item.
You know what? I can tell you that the commissioner called me and, and, and asked me to steward this item and just like I told the commissioner, I'm going to vote my conscience. That's all I'm going to say on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Boner?
When I was in the fraternity, we used to have a, a session called Truth Session, where if one party brother made a, a questionable statement about the other, the other party wasn't allowed to answer it a week later while they thought about it. I propose that we enforce that.
Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mona Lisa, I want to thank you for recognizing Commissioner Quinn tonight. Uh, she is recovering from a significant procedure and we miss her and wish her Godspeed in returning to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, same thing. Just want to wish, uh, Vicki Quinn, uh, Commissioner Quinn, the best in, in her recovery and, uh, Mona Lisa, I think you're getting a pretty good handle on when to come up here and talk, so give yourself some credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and Vicki, get well. Anybody else wish to say anything? This meeting's adjourned.